I love doing that. Crazy. All right. To begin with, if we could, if you could all join me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gee, we almost have a full house tonight. All right. Is there anybody here who wishes for public comment? You guys don't count. All right. Approval of the...
I move the approval in the minutes of September 12, 2018.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. All right, the treasures report. Did everybody have a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Need a vote to accept that, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay. We have no old business posted. We have no student rep tonight.
We do not, I'm not sure where he is.
Okay. Well, maybe he'll show up and we'll go back to him.
Madam Superintendent, would you like to begin?
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Committee members. For informational purposes today, I have some personnel actions and hires. Security officer, part-time security officer, interim maintenance mechanic, cafeteria helper, roof bus driver. I also have articulation agreement coordinator, the early college program coordinator, portfolio liaison, concurrent enrollment liaison, mental health professional development counselors, instructional technology assistants, AP coordinator liaison, class club advisors and co-op coordinators, evening school, clerical help for evening school registration. At this time, I do not have a budget update. Tonight... Did you have your hand raised?
Just get more questions, okay?
Yes, sorry.
What is the articulation agreement for?
So, the articulation agreement coordinator, we've had that position for many years. What they do is, within a certain vocational area, you work with the community college and those students receive college credit in those areas. So...
Oh, that's good.
It's very good.
I ask you that every year and I can never remember from year to year.
There's two others.
Sure.
That I didn't quite understand the difference, now I do.
Okay.
Except for, okay, early college program and concurrent enrollment liaison, what's the difference between those two?
So, the concurrent enrollment is... They're very similar. The concurrent enrollment is students that are already here, that are getting college credit, very much like the articulation, and then the early college program are for students that are part of the Northern Essex Community College Program, and they're taking the courses here through Northern Essex Community College. So, it's not a significant difference, but they are two different positions. So, concurrent enrollment, for instance, some of our advanced manufacturing, those programs are having some concurrent enrollment credits, as well as articulation agreements. So...
Okay, so it's different than like, for example, manufacturing versus English classes, is that what you're saying?
Right, right. So, the early college program are mostly academic classes. The concurrent enrollment are...
Great.
Yes.
That's one question. The vast majority of these hires faculty?
Yes.
Thank you.
At this time, there's not a budget update. MCAS update, Katrina Jensen, the coordinator of data assessment, will be doing a presentation in a little bit regarding last spring's MCAS exam and our results. On Friday, September 14th, I attended the MAVA officers meeting at Bay Path Vocational Technical School in Charlton. On Monday, September 17th, Beverly DeSalvo, our vocational coordinator, and I met with Tracy Fuller from the YMCA and discussed possible early childhood program. On Wednesday, September 19th, I attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting at Kentucky Bank in Haverhill. On Wednesday, September 6th, I met with Tavers Company regarding our vertical turf field. On Thursday, September 27th, I attended the Haverhill Chamber and Haverhill City Council and evening with Jack Gardner at Battlegrounds Coffee Company in Haverhill, along with Beverly DeSalvo, our vocational coordinator. On Thursday, September 27th, I also attended the college affordability program put on by Representative Vargas at the UMass Lowell Innovation Hub in Haverhill. I'm glad they were just down the street from each other. On Friday, September 28th, I attended the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable in Meadle in Dandvice. On Tuesday, October 2nd, I attended area vocational meeting at Neshoba Tech. On Wednesday, October 3rd, I met with Charter Brothers regarding the new Allied Health Center. On Wednesday, October 3rd, I attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber Annual Dinner at DeBurroughs. On Friday, October 5th, I hosted the area superintendent meeting. In attendance was Brett Conway from Pawtucket, Jared Falgoney from Amesbury, Sean Gallagher from Newburyport. At this meeting, I shared with the superintendent's board's plan to expand its night school program and vocational programs to include cosmetology, advanced manufacturing, and licensed practical nursing. On Tuesday, October 6th, October 16th, I met with Ipswitch Superintendent Dr. Brian Blake along with Chris Leganes, and we were able to have lunch and take a tour of the building. Also before you tonight, I have a proposal to establish a peer leadership advisor position. This position, we've been working on this position for the last year and a half or so. We have had somebody working, trying to work on our peer leadership, and it's a part of our school improvement plan. It's not a part of our current contract, but I would like approval to establish this.
Will we establish a peer leadership advisor position? I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion?
Couple of questions. How does this hook into Skills USA? Because we do do peer training and speaking and leadership kinds of things through the Skill USA program.
Right. This has nothing to do with Skills USA. This is a separate program. So, these students, for instance, come in, came in this year for our freshman program. So, those students came in, they worked, they sat in the classes with the freshman teachers, they brought the kids to their next class. We're really trying to develop kind of a, I want to say a family, it sounds a little corny, but you know, kids really having some older students that can really mentor them to help them, you know, feel comfortable here at Whittier. So, we always, you know, use other advisors and other programs to help with those programs, but this is a definitely, we're training these kids to be mentors for our younger students.
And will this be a advisory similar to club advisories, a Skill USA, et cetera?
Yes, yeah. So, I'm looking for a stipend of $979, which would be the same stipend as the other advisors for those type of programs.
I just have a question, does the principal used to do that? Is that... Did you say that's used to do that work, but...
No? No. No, this is, this is, no, this is definitely a, I mean, yes, obviously the principal would help out and get those kids, but this is definitely somebody that is really focused on a peer leadership program, not a real program, not just kind of a put together and do the best we can, but this is somebody that's really committed to having peer leaders work with our younger students. Yes.
Yes, great.
Yes.
Paul, did you have a question?
Well, I wondered if it was a faculty member or a student, like a junior or senior?
No, it'd be a faculty member.
For the position, and they would train juniors and seniors to mentor?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that all that you have, Maureen?
I need a vote on that.
Oh.
I thought we did. Oh, no, we were discussing it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstentions? None, hearing none. Before we go on to Bev and Katrina, would you like to have Andrew do his report?
I have one more thing.
Oh, you do, okay.
I have a field trip for Skills USA State Leadership. It's a conference overnight. And I have three staff members that will be attending that conference along with our students.
Where is it?
It is in Marlborough. It's highlighted for me, but I couldn't find it.
And that's an overnight?
Yeah, that's an overnight.
Move to accept.
Fifteen students.
Any discussion?
All the paperwork will be ready. Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none? Andrew, hi, how are you? Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Lynch, and all other School Committee members. The girls soccer team is continuing to improve during the season, which saw 12 starters graduate the year before. A busy game schedule has limited practice opportunities, but the team has used the games as a tool to improve their play collectively and individually, and all have shown steady improvement. The girls varsity volleyball team swept the week of October 1st with three wins over Northeast, Academy at Penguin Hall, and Shawshin. On Friday, they beat Shawshin in the thrilling five-set rematch. Everyone on the team contributed to the win. Varsity punched their ticket to the MIAA state tournament on Tuesday with their victory over Neshoba Tech. The varsity team is now 10-4 and 9-3 in the lead. The varsity cheerleading team is quickly molding their routine together. They're competing Saturday at the 20th at Ipswitch, which will be their showcase performance, meaning this will be their first time anyone has seen their routine. They've been, they've had tough practices, but they're unbreakable and confident. They're the best of all competitors. The boys and girls cross-country teams are down to their last home meet, and they will get ready for the CAC championship meet on the 27th. All the athletes are performing well and are looking forward to qualifying. The boys varsity soccer team is currently 3-5-2 at the halfway point of the season and will need five wins in the remaining eight matches to qualify for the state tournament. Our senior game is October 27th at 11:00 a.m., so please feel free to come and celebrate our seniors. The varsity football team is off to a great start with a 3-3 record. The seniors have stepped up big time, showing great leadership during the season, and they had a tough bit against Essex Tech last Friday night, but are hoping to bounce back hard against this week against Northeast. Chess club is booming and meeting every Thursday, lots of new students, with over a dozen last week. There are many new students that are just beginning to learn, so there are competitive open games that, so they may learn how pieces move and support each other. The chorus is rehearsing for their second performance of the year at Open House. They will be singing a few songs in the cafeteria at 3:00 p.m. Their members include 23 students from all classes and have already received a great reception for the performance at the pep rally. They're still working on selecting their spring musical, and auditions for that will be held in early November. Student government is coming off fresh with a very successful spirit week and pep rally to start the school year. Furthermore, student representatives attended a student council meeting on the 9th of October with members of the administration, as well as at-large members of the school community to discuss thoughts on the opening of the 2018-2019 school year. Spirit week and the pep rally, as well as to provide general student feedback. The GSA is now all up and running. All students are welcome to attend. Meetings will typically be every other Thursday. They are looking forward to planning on the event in January for no-name-calling week as some as potential guest speakers. The key club is underway and looking forward to a great year. We have set Thursday afternoon, week one, as our meeting time. Recently, 12 members volunteered during the Haverhill Gazette Santa Fund Hole-in-One, providing 52 hours of service to the community. We had fun and look forward to more services, opportunities, as the year progresses. Peer-to-peer club is asking everyone in Whittier community to join them in wearing pink on Friday, October 19th, for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. On Thursday, November 1st, peer-to-peer and Above the Influence Program are holding a fundraiser for the domestic violence awareness. Participants will meet on the track after school to walk followed by refreshments in the cafeteria. All proceeds will be donated to the program that, for adolescents who have been affected by domestic violence. There will be three DECA members this year attending at the Fall Leadership on Wednesday, October 17th, at the Sherrington in Framingham. On January 10th, 2019, they will compete in the DECA districts at Merrimack College, and they're hoping for 30 members to compete at this event. The Interact Club is meeting on October 18th to discuss upcoming events. They are holding our annual community outreach event at Bethany Holmes in Haverhill, Mass. The Multicultural Club is meeting on the second, fourth Thursdays of the month, Miss DiMario's Room. They are currently designing a new logo for the club to bring to our mission of appreciating and understanding all cultures here in our Whittier community. A member of our club who is in design and visual communications is designing the new logo. They are anticipating for annual Coats for Kids Draft beginning after Thanksgiving vacation.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there plans yet for a Christmas concert, or is there a play or something?
I have no idea, but I think chorus is planning something.
Yeah, but there will be a month.
And...
I have a question. Is his report put into the record for us to read later?
It's in your minutes, isn't it?
That's a lot of information.
Yeah, that was a lot.
It is.
This is such a busy community, and it's so good for the kids.
Good report, Andrew. Thank you very much. Thank you. And any questions for Andrew, or? No? All right. So, now we would like to go to Beverly DeSalvo, please. Our Vocational Technical Director.
Can seniors one again, I hear? Senior's one spirit week.
Oh, yeah, big time.
He was here last month. And his wife, too.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the committee, Superintendent Lynch. I'm Beverly DeSalvo, the Vocational Technical Coordinator, and I'm here this evening to provide the vocational technical update. New this year, we are finally in the construction phase of the new Allied Health Center. This will allow us to offer dental assisting as a new Chapter 74 program for the students in the district. This is all from a capital skills grant of $420,000. We were able to purchase state-of-the-art dental assisting equipment, and also the funds help us with the renovations of the existing space. The Allied Health Center will house dental assisting, health assisting, and medical assisting. Specifically, the dental assisting area will have four dental operatories, they're called, or just like when you go into the dental office, you know, those individual chairs that you sit in. State-of-the-art sterilization center, a plaster center, and two X-ray systems, one digital and one panoramic system. We hired, we were very lucky, we were able to hire a dental assisting teacher that started in September of this year. We enrolled sophomores and juniors into the dental assisting program, which would be year one. And I already said the construction began October 1st. Hopefully, it will go no longer than 11 weeks. Unfortunately, we had planned to have the construction over last spring and summer, so we had to defer our application for the final approval from DESI for Chapter 74. Everything has been approved except for the inspection of the facilities. So, I applied for that deferment yesterday, and we will expect to have full approval in June of '19. Any questions about that before I go on to co-op?
Charlie, go ahead.
Yes. The dental assisting teacher, what is that individual's function?
She's a Chapter 74 licensed dental assisting teacher, so her background in her trade area, she would have to have had over six years' experience in dental assisting. She came to us from Neshoba Tech, where she's been a teacher, vocational teacher, for probably over eight years. So, very lucky.
Who's she gonna do for this year?
She is offering dental assisting. Right now, they're in the classroom. Dental assisting is very different from health assisting and medical assisting, where their infection control practices are so specific and intense, I guess would be the right word, that they're doing all of that work now, and then in December, they'll be able to move to the lab to put more, you know, the skills into practice.
Well, that's good. So, we can actually initiate the program without the final inspection?
Yes, yes. Yes, absolutely.
That was my question. Go ahead, Paul.
And just one question. What is it, the certificate you get? Is it dental assistant?
Yes, dental assisting, a Chapter 74 trade certificate for dental assisting.
Dental assistant?
Yes.
Joanne?
Oh, and I think it would be helpful if Bev could explain the difference between health assisting and medical assisting, even though their current programs, there is just a little bit of a differentiation, and sometimes it's good for people to quite, to understand the differences.
Certainly. So, health assisting is direct patient care. The kiddos that choose health assisting will go on to earn their CNA certification, and they will work directly with patients. Medical assisting is more of the office side of the profession, you know, the health professions, like when you go to the doctors and they check you in with your weight and your blood pressure and take your history, and assist the doctor for anything needs that they would have at that time, so it's not direct patient care. Thank you.
I just had one question, looking at everything you're gonna provide for the dental program. Might we want to consider at some point a radiology program here, if they're going to be?
Well, I think that the, I mean, obviously, would obviously look at that, but I think to have a radiology program, the equipment piece of it, I mean, we wouldn't have a dental assisting program without this grant.
Right.
And the plan is, as far as the Allied Health Center, is really to make sure that this area is prepared for the next 10 to 15 years, and looking at a licensed practical nursing program at night, and then possibly a dental assisting program at night as well. So...
And radiology at this time is not a Chapter 74 program?
No, it's not.
No, it's not?
I just know it's one of the most popular things at NECO and the other community colleges, and this waiting list, you sometimes have to wait years to get into the program.
I can assure you that all of the thought process going into the design and everything for the new Allied Health Center was forward-thinking, so that down the road it would support an LPM post-secondary program, hopefully a dental assisting post-secondary program. And, you know, we can only hope that it will be able to also support other programs as we move forward and identify more areas in the labor market that need further investigation for programs.
That's very exciting.
It is, yeah.
It is, very.
It's gonna be great.
All right.
I've learned a lot.
She's basically an architect now, too, so...
I got a quick question.
Anyone? Charlie?
One quick one. Do we have any estimation of how many students would probably entertain getting into this field?
Right now, I probably have between 12 and 15 students enrolled, and she is also, or the department is also offering exploratory, so I envision a well-populated program starting in February or March when we enroll the new freshmen. Especially when the center is done, we're going to be...
Yeah. So, will that affect the overall population, then?
No. Student enrollment, you mean? Total student enrollment? No.
So... But you think there'll be students coming here just for that program?
Oh, of course, yeah.
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah.
So, shouldn't that lessen some of the other programs?
It may, yeah. I mean, sometimes that's what we happen when you open up new programs, you know, you know, engineering, for instance, we opened up the engineering, our electronics robotics program, students became a little bit less, so...
So, the plan is not to increase enrollment to compensate, but to keep it the same?
Well, I mean, it would be great if we increased enrollment, but, you know, opening up that program wouldn't necessarily be the reason to do that, yeah.
Yeah, our focus is to offer students as many programs and career opportunities as possible, so...
We're pretty much at capacity for student enrollment right now.
Yeah.
So... Anything else, Bev?
Yes, I just wanted to give you a cooperative education update. As of October 1st, there were 141 seniors working in their trade, or 44% of the senior class. And we just completed the one-year follow-up survey for the graduates of class of 2017, and we recorded a 94% positive placement rate.
That's impressive.
Yes, it was very good this year. Yeah.
It is very impressive.
And that's consistent with what it's been for the past couple of years.
The 94% includes military?
Correct.
Trade?
Correct.
And post-secondary education?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? No? Okay.
I'll thank you.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Katrina Jensen.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Lynch, and School Committee members. I am Katrina Jensen, the coordinator of data and assessment. And tonight, I have the distinct pleasure of reviewing our MCAS results and the new accountability system. So, we're gonna start with English Language Arts. And 99% of the students passed on the first try, with 95.7% of them reaching advanced and proficient. These students in English are above the state average in all students and the subgroups, and I just wanted to point out on this slide, especially the special education subgroup. This chart compares where students were in 7th grade compared to 10th grade, and it shows their growth. And I would just like to point out on this chart that in the advanced category, our students had a 33.8% increase from 7th to 10th grade in that performance category.
That's incredible.
Next up is math. Math had 96.3% pass on the first try, with 82.7% getting into advanced or proficient. Again, Whittier Tech is above the state in all students and subgroups. And on this chart, I wanted to point out the special ed and the economically disadvantaged subgroups, because they are well above the state average. This chart compares 8th grade MCAS scores from math to 10th grade, and again, I just want to point out the advanced category, we had a 38% increase in growth from when they were in 8th grade to 10th grade in the advanced performance category. In science and technology, we had a 97.7% pass rate for the first time, which is a 3% increase from last year, and 78.5 students got into the advanced or proficient category. And I'd just like to mention on this, the state still has needs improvement as the bar. So, 78.5% of our students got into advanced or proficient. For science and technology, again, all of our, Whittier Tech is above the state in all students, and in special education and economically disadvantaged as well. And again, this chart shows 8th grade to 10th grade growth, and I'd like to point out that in the advanced, 19.7% increase, and proficient, 31.8% increase. Our current competence determination, since 2007, every student that leaves Whittier has a high school diploma and a trade certificate. Right now, the class of 2019 is 99.7% there. And the class of 2020, who are the juniors, are 95.7% there. Now, we move into the accountability. Accountability changed this year with the state, so this is the first time this accountability is coming out using the spring of 2018 scores. There's no more leveling of schools. So, this accountability has four new indicators. There's achievement for English, math, and science. There's growth only for English and math. They're calling this third bucket "high school completion," which is the four-year graduation rate, the extended engagement rate, which is the five-year graduation rate, if you looked at the district profiles from years before, and the annual dropout rate. And then the fourth bucket are the additional indicators, which is chronic absenteeism and advanced coursework. So, those are the four new buckets for accountability. This chart just shows you how we did on that. Each one is out of four points. So, broken down achievement, we got an eight out of 12. For growth, a six out of eight. For high school completion, 10 out of 12. And the additional indicators, a six out of eight. They gave us an accountability percentile of 77%, which means we are better than 77% of the other high schools in Massachusetts.
Wow.
And that's it.
Pretty impressive as well. Any questions for Katrina?
I just had, as far as the state rubric goes for figuring out the MCAS scores, is it becoming less complicated, staying the same, or more complicated? There was a time when it was very complicated and it seemed to be getting simpler. Is it getting more complicated now that they're adding science?
Definitely different again, because now they've added, you know, the last six years, they've been focused on MCAS scores, achievement and growth. They've really focused on that. They've added now other indicators with the absenteeism, with the advanced coursework. Those are new benchmarks that have not been included before. So, it's definitely changing.
Or changed.
Yeah, it has changed. Yes, yes.
So, maybe some questions, Superintendent, but how's the data gonna change instruction? And sort of how, how this is, presumably that's the outcome of looking at the data, right?
Yeah, well, data.
So, besides the accountability changing, this spring in 2019, the state is pushing out a new grade 10 MCAS as well. So, now, all the grade 10 students are gonna have to take the MCAS on a device. So, we are doing the iPads that you all purchased for the students. So, they won't be taking it on paper anymore. And then within that, they've changed the types of questions. So, we, we have recent, we've been doing webinars to learn what kinds of questions. For example, the English Language Arts test used to have a long composition. So, one day was just devoted to that. There no longer is a long composition. It's now back to multiple choice and they're not calling them open response. I think they're calling them short essays. So, and it's only two days instead of three. And then within that, there's also some technology skills that the students have to make sure that they are up to date with. So, if they want to highlight when they're going through the passage, they have to be able to flip back and forth from the passage to the question. And then on math, they've changed the reference sheet completely. Now, the whole first part of it is conversions, like inches to feet, you know, pounds, there's quarts on it. So, that's all new. And then they've added a trig question, which has not been added before. So, our admin team and our staff are out there furiously. Anything that the DESE is putting out there, we are getting, we're giving to our kids, we're practicing. We always do practice tests. This year, both practice tests have been given on the iPad. So, the kids are getting used to taking it on the iPad and not on paper. So, you know, we have two different things going. You know, with the additional indicators, we're in a good spot, attendance, we got a four out of four. And then the coursework, we're definitely working on. We were at a meeting in the vocational areas, because they have articulation agreements, are gonna be coded so that they are advanced coursework. So, you know, that, we're thinking maybe that'll help us out. We don't really know. There's not a lot of, out there about advanced coursework. There's a list of courses that they're accepting, but that's about it, so.
And I think on the additional indicators and the achievement, you know, guidance meets with all their kids that are failing or have Ds in courses and have attendance. And then they bring that, they bring, the principal has meetings with the guidance counselors about those kids. And then the principal then meets with those kids. So, there's, there's a real effort to try to remediate any kinds of issues between attendance and grades that is happening with our, with our students. And I think that's really what shows with, especially the chronic absenteeism. We really try to make, find out what's going on with students and get them, get them to school. And it's a, it's a full effort by the teachers, by the guidance counselors, by the administrative team to try to make sure that we're, you know, this, we didn't even know about these things. We're sort of lucky that this has been ongoing, that we've been doing this for a while, but, so that's sort of, you know, and as the new test comes out, you know, there's some anxiety about that. But, you know, as long as our, our, our teachers are teaching and our students are learning, I feel very confident that we're gonna be just fine.
Does the test results drive changes in curriculum?
Data drives, yes. So, and that would drive our tutoring as well. So, we have students that are tutored.
So, the new test is on the common core changes they made a couple of years ago. So, our curriculum coordinator had already, you know, we were kind of doing the old legacy MCAS curriculum, adding in the common core next generation. So, we've been adjusting as they've been making changes. So, we're hopeful that we've been keeping up and that our curriculum is where it needs to be.
Advanced coursework completion, what, what is advanced coursework specifically? Don't we know that yet?
No, they, they did put out a list. So, it varies by subject matter. So, for example, in English, there were three things on the list. An international baccalaureate program, dual enrollment, which we have, and AP classes. For math, math is, math and science are the ones they gave a very detailed score. So, you know, we've already checked, I've already checked with the principal and the director of people personnel to make sure that all the classes that we offer are coded the way they want them coded, and they are. So, we're in good shape. In science, you know, again, it's international baccalaureate program, AP classes. And then we just, you know, through the vocational superintendent's group, they pushed for vocational schools to get credit for the vocational work that we're doing so that any articulation areas, we have articulation agreements, which are all of them, we'll be able to get some credit for that now. But there is a list on their website and we've been looking at it. We've, everything that we do that is possible is already been coded for that.
And I think that's probably the thing that's been the hardest for schools to figure out, is that coding. There's, there's many layers to this, this new accountability system.
Well, are there any public high schools that have IB and IB diploma?
I, I thought it was just private schools.
Yeah, I didn't know that public schools even had that.
Penn Tucket Elementary School over in Merrimack has an IB program.
Really?
Good question.
I'll go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I just want to know one more question. Does the Department of Education send you regular guidelines, regulations and guidelines to follow? Or do they just dump you one big package at the beginning of the year and say, this is the new package? You've gotta go through it.
Um, they, we knew it was changing. We didn't exactly know how it was going to change and how the rating system and the rubric was going to be. They gave us some targets in the late spring, May or June, so we'd already taken the test. I've been to some webinars. I've been to two. I'm going to one more conference this week. They've assured us we're gonna get those targets in November so that we know where our target is, so that we can, you know, since we're doing all this practice testing, we can accurately prepare for, are we meeting our target? Where are we falling behind? So, we can use that data to, you know, push forward if, if necessary.
Thank you. I appreciate the effort you put into following all the different regulations.
It's not, it's not just a team of people and, you know, we have a lot of dedicated people here who are fighting for the kids to make sure that, again, since 2007, everybody leaves here with a diploma. It's, it's really important to everybody.
Yeah, we do that. Thank you.
Jane, I have one question as well. How much time out of the, the school day of the school year, are you practicing the tests?
So, we do twice in English, twice in math. So, they do two days in the fall and then they'll do two days, well, English will do two days in December because their test is then in March. And then math just actually is doing theirs now and they won't do it again until February because their test isn't until May. And then in science, we just do it once.
So, it's not like they're doing it all the time and taking time away from their classrooms?
No, because they're assessing in their daily, you know, in their daily regular classes. They're using what is needed, the curriculum is based on. This is just, let's see where you are with everything thrown at you at once, instead of piecemeal.
Thank you very much. Charlie?
I got a couple of questions. On the advanced proficient needs improvement failing range?
Yes.
Within each range is, is points, correct?
Correct, yes.
Do we know where each student is within the range?
Yes. So, every student that gets advanced or proficient gets 100 points. And then, you know, students that have a 230, do a 230, get 75 points, yes. Each student, when I get their item analysis, it says like Katrina Jensen got 100. It'll tell me exactly how many points they got, yes.
So, we, so then we, on the schools? That there's 12 students, whatever, I'm just making these numbers up, that are within five points of moving to the next bracket?
Correct, yeah.
And within those students, do we know the, you should know the areas where they were deficient?
Yes, so, for example.
So, would you put emphasis on that?
Yes, so, for example, the kids that did not, were not successful in the spring and they're gonna test actually in a month. I've already gone on to the, it's called item analytics, but anyways, it's basically an item analysis per kid. It breaks down question type, standard type, and I give that to the teachers so that they know exactly, hey, this kid might do great with algebra, but they're really struggling with geometry and specifically within geometry triangles.
Oh, good.
And, you know, for the English, this student really struggled with the long composition. They didn't get any points, or they wrote a plot summary. So, it's very detailed on what they should work with, with the students that were unsuccessful.
I think that's pretty important.
Yes.
And if I may, the, on this performance comparison between 8th and 10th?
Yep.
Do we have any data of how the in-district schools did?
That, that is, oh, you mean when they took it, so what I do to get?
Take whomever, Penn Tucket.
Yep.
Do we know what they, what their?
Yes.
Was from 8th to 10th?
Yes, yes. I have, yes. I did it generally, all students, but I separately with the superintendent, I have it broken out by districts so that, you know, we know how many kids were from Haverhill in this testing group, where were they in 8th grade and where, where did they fall in 10th grade?
But what about Penn Tucket itself?
Yes, oh, yeah, I do it, I do it in, for every community, Haverhill, Ipswich.
Oh, I mean, the kids that go to Penn Tucket.
Oh, you, oh, no, I can't access individually, but I could go online, which I have also done. And I can give general, you know, Penn Tucket, I don't wanna say.
For instance, say, Penn Tucket, we had a 19-point, I mean, Whittier had a 19.7% increase.
Right.
Say, Penn Tucket, not to say anything, was at 15%. So, then that would tell me all this, that we're doing a little bit better than.
Yeah, so I could, I could go back and do that. I could go back and do that, yes.
So, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
And I think our program, me personally, from being on the board, is kind of more aggressive. You know, we actually have almost an IEP for every student. And I know the regular schools are working towards that, you know, not regularly, you know, the districts, public schools.
Right.
And then the same thing, just not to belabor it, but this accountability percent, I mean, do we, is there a way to figure out what, how we compare to the? Because I'm really concerned about Whittier versus the communities that we represent.
Yep, so that.
I don't, I care in a way, but it doesn't matter to me what happened in Bedford, you know?
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
So, I did, Maureen and I worked together, I gave her a list for vocational schools.
Yeah.
With their accountability percentiles, as well as then separately our sending districts. So, yes, I do have that.
Is that public information?
It is public information, actually. It's right on the DESE website, yes, yes. I know the school district profiles.
On the DESE?
Yeah, however, are the 2018 ones up yet? I could get it for you. They are, it's just tricky to find, but I could, if you want, I could get that for you.
Because I think in the long run, that that's a great marketing tool when we have, you know, when we talk to the towns, you know, here at Whittier, we take these students and we've increased them.
Well, I think as far as the towns go, all they need to do is see the increase. I don't think we need to single out.
No, 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 I'm just.
Any district or, or any particular students. Well, that's what she's given us, is the average.
But what I'm saying is.
I think that's all we need to know, is how good we're doing and how much better we're doing and how these kids are improving after they come to us. That's the important piece.
But, but the reverse of that is, because Ms. Lynch says it, it's data-driven. You know, if we say, oh, we went from, you know, 8th grade, 8th to grade 10, 19% and, and the community says, well, we went, we went 25%. What's the big deal? You know, we have to, I think for us, we, we have to compare ourselves to the towns we represent, not the rest of the, because if, because right now with the, based on the data we got beginning of the year, the school enrollment's going down in, in most of the districts. So, my feeling is that, you know, when, when Chapter 70 money's gonna be, and reflect, uh, is the right word? It's gonna, it's gonna, their monies are gonna go down. So, I think, you know, little by little, the schools are gonna try to keep in their kids from going to Whittier. You know, because, because they're, they're cutting classes and, you know, doing all sorts of things to.
I think we're on the right track.
Oh, we are.
To trust Katie that she's gonna do this.
Oh, yeah.
Make us proud.
Yeah, and. She has, I mean.
Okay.
If I could just add, the individual school committees are doing, are looking at their own numbers and making their own decisions and we're, we're looking at our numbers and making our own decisions.
Right, right. That's their job.
We have to be current, you know?
8th grade and 7th grade and 4th grade, that's their job. It's not our job, so.
I know from some of the people I know that other schools, namely Triton, you know, they get, their enrollment's down 40%. They're trying to figure out how to keep kids in school and do better.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Katie, anything else? Thank you so much. You're very patient.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And now we have our Director of People Personnel, Patty Lowell. Welcome.
Thank you. We had a little fly keeping us company up here. It followed Katie over there, so I'm good. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Lynch and School Committee members. In your packet, you received the October 1 enrollment report that will be reported to the Department of Secondary and Elementary Ed. I've also included a comparison of the enrollment data to last year for your information and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Are you ready now?
Thank you very much.
I noticed that, and I know it's, it's an undulating curve that this year we're back up in enrollment. And some towns have had kind of a loss, some towns have had a gain. That's just normal stuff, right?
Yeah, I think so. I think we saw a really nice increase in admissions, applications with our online program last year and I think that made, I'm really attributing the gain, both to, we know it ebbs and flows every year a little bit, but I, just from my experience working with that online program last year, we had a steady flow of applications all year. I think it really helped with access to us. I think I saw an increase both in in-district applications from our sending public districts, but also from the private schools and homeschooled students. So, I think it just helped with that access point, that people were looking online and getting our information and being able to apply online. Really made a big difference. Yes.
I have a question. There was a packet, in the packet and then one when we came in. And there's a two-student enrollment difference.
Yes. So, when we did, we have to prepare this report for October 1 and then after October 1 is when we start submitting the data to DESI for error reports and that sort of thing. And actually, it has to be certified by next week. In that process, we learned of a change in how we report students who were enrolled but didn't come in September. And so, we were in the process, who, upperclassmen. And so, we were in the process of trying to find them. In the past, we've always, until we know where they are, we reported them as still enrolled. We were, there's a regulation around that, that we were following very strictly. And in the late summer, they, the department sent out a memo about how these students would be reported and they were reporting back to us that these two students needed to be reported as dropouts or GED as of October 1. We didn't know that at that time and so we had to change their status.
Okay, so what's, is it the higher number, so it's the lower number back?
Yeah, so there were two seniors that we lost as of October 1. Actually, one we discovered on October 4th that she was in a GED program and the other student, we have, we still don't have any enrollment data on him. This, the Department of Ed will continue to track that student through this asset and let us know, because right now, he looks like a dropout to us, but they will let us know if he does enroll in another school and we just haven't. know if he does enroll in another school, and we just haven't been notified yet.
Okay.
That's how they find some of those kids in this October report.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So who's gonna have the privilege of notifying Amesbury that their, their cost's gone about two hundred thousand?
I think the Amesbury represented.
That's quite a jump in one year.
They've already been informed.
Do they have?
Yeah.
That's quite a jump in one year.
Yeah, that's gonna, when you have that big of a jump, we, we really reach out to them and let them know that that's gonna happen, yeah.
Yeah, they've been fairly steady.
Hmm?
They've had a very, very steady number over, I think, several years.
Yeah, oh, yeah, this is, you know, that's up about twenty-five percent, I mean, that's great. Maybe they're finally getting the message.
Joanna, I just noticed that the number of females and males seem closer, is that, am I imagining that?
No, I think it's, it's definitely evening out, you know, I've, I've been here a long time, when I came here, I was lucky, and I had two or three students in a class, and now it's, we're at almost fifty-fifty, which is very nice to see.
Yeah, because we got to encourage the female students to come here, and I think traditionally, maybe people thought this was more of a school, so it's just really nice to see a balance, it's great.
Any other questions for Patty? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Be there bright and early, ladies, I'll see ya.
Our wonderful principal.
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, Superintendent Lynch, rest of the School Committee members, you heard from Andrew about the Spirit Week, it was a fun week, started on Monday, September 24th, ended the Friday with the pep rally, you know, we had tie dye day, the kids came up with this, the Student Government Tie Dye Day, Hawaiian Day, Squad Day, where they dressed up in their uniforms, and we were, we were a squad, actually, as an admin team of Whittier Tech Squad, and then on Friday, it was the Class Color Day to end the week, you know, friendly competition between the classes, some events included tug-of-war, which was pretty interesting, because Mother Nature didn't comply with us that day, so we were inside, but the kids had a blast, and, and I know Andrew could attest to that, and the basketball shooting, the senior class, this is the second year, Mr. James, they won two years in a row, last year the junior class, and we have a trophy that says the winner of the pep rally, so you guys had fun, didn't you?
We had a blast.
Awesome, that's what it's all about. I just want to shout out and a special thanks goes to the Student Government Advisors, Student Advisors, students, staff, and security staff for helping out for just a fun week and that day, it can get, get a little loud in, in the gymnasium with everybody going, but the kids were just fabulous, so it was an awesome, awesome week. The Above the Influence Program, which continues with a goal, which is to help teens and stand up to the negative influences, pressures, pressures of outside and presenting, this year Roxanne Grover is gonna present to the Student Body Community Impact Panel on Tuesday, October 30th, run a few assemblies, so that's going strong, and also pencil in your calendars, because a few weeks from now, we're gonna have our open house, it sounds, November sounds like it's far away, but it's not, November 4th, from one to four, we're in the stages of planning, DeSalvo, who was here, was, she's an amazing planner. The Guidance Department hosted the College Fair on Thursday, the 11th, during all four lunches, for 11th and 12th graders, and we had forty-six colleges showing up, and if you were in the gymnasium, it was, again, another amazing event, Guidance Director Christine Morrison, the Guidance Crew, we walked in the gymnasium, and it was just amazing, the colleges and all the kids, everybody was in there, and again, Andrew, you, you probably were there, it was, it was a beautiful event. So forty-six colleges, my alma mater, UNH was there too, so it was nice to get some pictures. Also, Whittier Tech continues its commitment to the safety of the students and staff through ongoing monitoring of school safety procedures, a few weeks ago, we had a shelter in place, and, you know, we will continue the train throughout the, the entire year, so that's all I have for you.
Joanna?
I noticed you had a new safety protocol, getting in the building, buzzing, getting buzzed into the building.
Yes, you know, that, that's the vestibule, which, which if you've noticed, if you come in the front area, it looks like it's been there, and we, the Electrical Department, you know, outside contractors, Bob, our new Maintenance Director, they all got together, and Kevin Williams, obviously with the IT, you don't realize all the, the wires that are involved in switching over our, our front desk over into that vestibule, so we're hoping, and I wanted to surprise Ms. Lynch, but we're hoping by maybe tomorrow, or that we're gonna make that transition over there, so the whole, the whole front desk, as you walk in, is all gonna be transferred in the vestibule where it's nice, so the security area where everybody has to get buzzed into the school, so.
Good job. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And our Business Manager, Kara Cosmas, step right up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee. In your packet, you have a couple of things from me, the first is the annual five-year capital plan, and as we do every year at this time, it is for your review, it serves as a planning document, we update it each year to project what the district's capital needs would be over the next five years, and we use it as we do our budget development. Some of the things on here, obviously, might be eliminated if we get into the pipeline for the Mass School Building Association, we've submitted a fourth statement of interest, they did come to visit us in August, as Ms. Lynch told you at the last meeting, and we'll be hearing from them either in December or January, but aside from those things, this is, mostly Ms. DeSalvo works with the vocational cluster chairs and teachers to see what are the capital needs, obviously, transportation is on here, security is on here, other things like that, technology, and most of it is just, so that you are aware, when you see it in the budget, or you hear us talking about it, you're aware of it, what we think we're going to need. Are there any questions? Mr. Tucker?
Just on the, well, the variance analysis, I don't have too many questions, I was wondering more about the five-year plan, so.
Okay, that's what we're talking about right now.
Okay, on the field out back, that's a substantial amount of money, and is there a schedule or a current status, and a schedule for when it might be done?
We've had two meetings with the architect, architectural firm that we've engaged with, and we still have some work to do, we have to take a field trip, and there are different types of fields to put down, we had, I think, a very informative meeting, Ms. Lynch was there, Ms. Leganes was there, and they talked to us about all of the types of decisions that we would have to make. So now we have to look at making some of those decisions, and the schedule as planned, if everything goes as well, is to try to put the field out for bid, I believe they set around January, with the intention of, as soon as graduation is over, the next day, starting on the field, and hopefully having it ready by the start of school, or at least early in the football season.
So it'll take a full two months to get it up and running?
Well, yeah, I, I think what it is, is at that time of year, there's a lot of those projects going on, so you're competing with other, other vendors, and, and what their schedule is, and whoever's gotten to the well before you have, but that's the plan at this point for the field itself.
Charlie?
Just for general information, I was at the meeting, and in order to have the field the size to incorporate football, lacrosse, soccer, the field has to be larger, so now we have to change the track too. It's a whole, it's, it's really a good thing, you know, because that, because by that, then we'll meet all the, what's that agency there?
MIA?
MIA, standards, so we can have tournament games, just like we did with the basketballs, yeah.
So if you look on the five-year capital plan, you'll see that there's funding over three years, and Mr. Labella's right, he's also, I failed to mention, he's also been at the meetings with us, the track is something that we've talked about, so the funding would possibly need to be over two capital plan years, or possibly three, because there's different phases of it that you can do at different times, that's why it looks that way. Did you have a question?
I had a question, not in the fields. In regard to the dental assisting program, it says six hundred and fifty thousand this year, I assume the four hundred and twenty or four hundred and eighty that we got is coming out of that six hundred and fifty?
Yes and no, this was a multi-phased project, the, the equipment came out of the grant last year, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the grant is coming out for the rehab this year, and the rest of it will be funded through savings that we achieved because of the things that we did at the end of last school year. So, yes, but the whole grant is four twenty, and that will be used for all of the equipment and as much of the renovation as we can.
But we've already allowed for, for that in our budget.
Yes, we, we planned at the end of last year to be able to take care of it this year because of the timing of the bidding.
Okay.
Mr. Labella?
Yeah, I, I got a quick question on the buses.
Yes.
You have lease renewal, that's a five-year lease?
Mm-hmm.
Seventeen buses?
Yes, we just renewed it, the first payment was this July.
So that tells me that it's about forty thousand dollars for a bus.
Yeah, I guess, if you did the, if you did the math.
And then we're replacing buses at a hundred and fifty.
Mm-hmm.
How long does that last, the bus?
We have a five-year plan going for our vans and our buses, and Ms. Martin and I have worked on this, so that every five years, we are replacing the buses, either the seventeen that we leased, or the plan is to replace two buses every year, so that there's ten buses that we own, there's seventeen that we lease, so every five years, there will never be a vehicle here that's more than five years old.
Do you think it would be more economical if we leased more buses?
We talked about that, it's the mileage issue, so we'll see how it goes this time around, we obviously want to keep some of them, that we, we keep for spares, because we use them for other things besides just transporting the students, and you want to be careful of the mileage, but we felt comfortable enough, if you recall, the last lease was with ten buses, and we actually felt that we could go to seventeen this time because of the mileage, but we do go to Ipswich, and we do go to Rowland, we do go to Salisbury, and those, those mileages add up, so I think we will always have to have some buses that we own. Whether we can lease more the next time around, we'll see how we do with the mileage counts.
I think we should look at it, because if we're-
We definitely will.
If we're spending a hundred and fifty thousand to own the bus for five years, with the lease, we're spending forty thousand for five years, so I think there's kind of a little bit of an economic gap there, and, you know, I think we should, you know, reconsider. Maybe there's a way to rotate the buses for the Ipswich run, or just keep one or two, just isolate them for Ipswich, don't go anywhere else with them.
Well, the one thing I can tell you is because we don't have too, too much mileage, and we keep our buses in very good condition, when we do go to repurchase the buses, we do get a pretty good trade-in value, so I might-
Oh, we do?
Put down, yeah, I might put down a hundred and fifty, but the actual bids may sometimes come by, come down as to being actually less.
Oh, I think the last bus we bought was a hundred and twenty thousand?
It might be, it depends, you know, we've been very lucky with the bids, it depends who bids, it depends the condition of the buses, we had some very old buses, and they weren't getting us great trade-in values, but I know the last couple of times, we've traded in buses that were newer, like six or seven years old, and we got better trade-in values.
Lisa, you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question, I know that you mentioned that we've submitted the SOI now for the fourth time, the MSB came in and toured the building, if we are accepted into the pipeline, at that point, I guess we enter into a feasibility study?
We would have to, and that was part of the reason that we've been going, coming to you at the end of, sometime in May every year, asking to transfer money into the stabilization account, we wanted to try to gather enough money into the stabilization account, so that if that happened, we would not have to go back to the communities for money for the building feasibility study, so that's kind of the plan.
A million dollars.
I'm sorry?
Nearly eight hundred thousand, a million dollars.
Yeah, we have, we have almost nine hundred thousand, almost eight hundred thousand in stabilization right now, so if we were in the pipeline, we probably wouldn't start that facility study till next year, we transfer more money, we hope to have at least that, if not more, to cover that.
Would you people be looking for a total rebuild, and what, like, what does that look like?
My understanding is they, they make you go through the feasibility study, and they look at three options, whether you're looking for that or not, a renovation, an expansion, or a total rebuild. I do not believe that we will need a total rebuild, as Ms. Lynch says, we have good bones, but I do know that there are certain areas that they identified, such as the cafeteria, that they would consider expanding to make it a little bit larger, so I would not be surprised if you see some of the areas expanded slightly. You're welcome, any more questions?
No questions?
Okay, the next thing in your packet is the fi, the variance analogy, analysis, and it, and I just want to say to you that it looks a little bit different this quarter than you have seen in the past, and I will explain why. This represents transactions from July through September, and usually you see the usual yellow if the account is over, and green if there is money in an account to be able to cover that. This year, you also see two other colors, you see blue, and you see, like, an orangey beige. The reason for that is, when the budget was prepared, we prepared it with a two and a half percent salary increase, that was back last January, we had not negotiated any of the contracts or the individual contracts. After negotiations, the School Committee agreed to three percent increase because of the fact that the employee, employer share of health insurance increased from twenty-five percent to twenty-five point seven percent. So what I've done is I've shaded all of the accounts in blue that indicate where I need to put additional funds in, and I've shaded accounts in orange where there are available funds, and there are a couple of accounts that have some substantial numbers in there for a couple of reasons. One is, we've had savings from attrition of staff who've left or retired, and the other is, there have been a couple of instances where we have redeployed staff, either not filled the position, or created a, a position of like a, a teaching aide rather than a teacher, because we didn't necessarily need a teacher, and so the, the orange far outweighs the blue. I did not bring a transfer to you at this meeting, because the last opportunity for teachers who go and get additional credits to cross over lanes is October 1st, and I wasn't clear that we had received all of those, so you will get a transfer request from me in November that will balance out the salary accounts. The rest of it is as usual, some lines are over, some lines are under, the yellows are far outweighed by the greens, we have more than enough money in, in accounts with savings to balance out the accounts that have overages. So that is the reason for the different color, I wanted to explain it to you, and I entertain any questions you may have. Mr. Labella?
I got one quick one.
Sure.
On sporting goods first aid?
Yes.
With the budget seventy-four for the year?
Yeah.
We've incurred ninety-two thousand.
He needed uniforms, so we will work with it.
When do we know that?
Hmm? Some of them were replaced last year, but there were others that needed to be replaced that he informed us about, so, but some of them are placeholder encumbrances, Mr. Labella, which means he puts out there at the beginning of the year what he thinks he's going to need for the whole year, and more than likely, some of those encumbrances will be reduced, and it will not be the full ninety thousand. We've been trying to encourage people to, to plan in September what you think you need for the year, so there are no surprises. So I think even after this report, I believe he's worked with the bookkeeper to look at his encumbrances, and has already made some reductions in those numbers.
Right, no, no, my feeling is, if you need uniforms, then we should budget for it.
Mm-hmm.
Shouldn't just put a number in that looks good, and then come back and say, oh, I gotta get this and that, and then we just-
No, that's not what we've done.
I don't care if the number's three hundred thousand dollars, you know, we should budget for what we need.
We do try to do that, we have a good plan, we're working on with him now, where we've actually got a schedule of uniforms, so we know when to expect it.
All right, no, I just, I don't think it's your responsibility, because, you know, you gotta go to the, to the source, you know.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Not at the moment, no.
Thank you very much, Kara. All right, the November annual agenda items, we will be reviewing the curriculum, the collective bargaining contracts, and we will have a review and update of the technology plan, will Kevin be here then?
Yes.
Okay. And the Subcommittee reports, the Executive Subcommittee has not met. Instructional personnel, Joanna?
Instructional personnel did meet, there is a report of the meeting held on September 19th in your packet, and we had a presentation from Dr. Fay and Ms. Jensen and Ms. DeSalvo regarding the new programs, and pretty much saw most of the information you're seeing this evening, and we were very pleased. saw most of the information you're seeing this evening, and we were very pleased.
Do we need a vote on the minutes to accept the minutes, please?
Yes, you do. I move to accept the minutes of the Instructional Personnel Committee.
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? None? Okay. Plant Operations, Mr. Tucker?
We met prior to last month's meeting. They voted me chairman. We have the interim Plant Facilities Manager was introduced. He seems like a very nice fellow. And that's about it. I move to accept the minutes.
Do I have a second? We do. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Okay. Mr. Early is not here. Who else is on that committee?
I can do it.
Oh, okay. Brett, you're on.
Salary negotiations, we did meet on September 12th. The minutes to the meeting are in your package, which we will discuss in executive session. Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? None? Okay. And Dave is not here for the policy. Joanne, are you handling that?
I am. The Policy Subcommittee met on, hold on, September 12th, and we reviewed one, two, three, four, five, six, seven policies for the first reading. You received a copy of those in your packet. We would like to move that we accept those for the first reading and Schedule VII, second reading for the November meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those policies? Any questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions? None. Go. Thank you very much, Joanne.
Mr. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Move to accept the Policy Subcommittee Meeting Minutes.
That's right.
Yes.
We accepted the second reading. Any, do we have a second on that, please?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And our next School Committee meeting is the 14th of November at 6:30. And we have the conference in between. Do we have, who, we have members that are going? Excellent, excellent.
If I, if I can, at the end of the meeting, we have a list of all the activities for the, yes, if we can just meet afterwards to see what people want us to get tickets for and whatnot, that would be very helpful, because the tickets need to be ordered tomorrow.
Yes. All right, so.
MSB.
Need tickets now?
For certain events. Dinner.
See if I can make it.
All right. I need a motion to enter into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Human Resource Director slash Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent, and upon completion of executive session, will return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Would this requires a roll call vote?
Yes.
Scott? No. Okay, Lisa?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sorry. Wrong vote, yes.
You surprised me. Okay. Charlie?
Yes.
Yes, Paul?
Yes.
I was. So I said no.
Gary, Joanna, and Ben, and myself, yes. Yeah, everybody was a yes, yeah.
Did you say we were going back into public session?
We will be coming back into public session, yeah.
If I can just have the Business Manager stay as well? That's okay with the committee?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I now call the Whittier School Committee meeting. We're back in open session, and we.
Move approval of the Human Resource Director and Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent's contract. Second.
Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. Roll call vote? Should we do this?